Hi, I'm Dr. Renee Turchi, Plymouth Whitmarsh High School distinguished graduate and pediatrician at St. Christopher's Hospital for Children, and you're watching CITV.
Hello, and welcome to the meeting, September 19th meeting of the Colonial School District Board. Would we all raise, or stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before we start, I am a little taller than our president, who's not here tonight, she's on vacation, so we will try to do our best. I'd like to announce that the board met in executive sessions on September 11th, 2017, September 19th, 2017, and we also met on executive session on September 11th. Details can be found in the minutes of the Human Resources and Finance Committee minutes. We also met in executive session prior to this meeting to discuss the actions on this evening's personnel reports and confidential student matters related to our free and public education. This evening's meeting lasted approximately one hour. We have recognitions and awards. Dr. Christian?
Yes, we do. We'd like to acknowledge and congratulate the Technology Student Association who are here with us this evening. The Colonial chapter of the TSA performed exceptionally well again this summer at the national competition. In fact, one of our student teams from the Colonial Middle School won first place in their category. To tell us about all the students' accomplishments, please welcome Colonial Middle School teacher and TSA advisor Clint Rickert. Welcome, Mr. Rickert.
On behalf of Colonial TSA, I would like to welcome Dr. Christian to Colonial School District, and we look forward to many successful years under his leadership. The 2017 Technology Student Association TSA Conference took place at the Rosen Schingle Creek Hotel in Orlando, Florida from June 21st to the 25th. Fourteen students from Plymouth Whitmarsh High School and 21 students from Colonial Middle School participated in the competition showing off their skills in science, technology, engineering, art, and math, STEAM, and competing against more than 7,700 students from across the United States, Turkey, Germany, and Japan. The Colonial School District chapter is part of TSA, the second-largest career and technical student organization, or CTSO, whose mission is to teach students important technological skills necessary for the modern world so that they will be able to lead in the technical world, as their motto suggests. Students displayed their expertise in STEAM-related concepts, events, challenges, students to use their skills in various forms of technology ranging from fashion design to computer-aided design. PWHS students were proud to showcase and challenge their talents in numerous technological events, notably the high school team of Pat Corpus, Tom Demanovich, Giancarlo Donini, Scott Hore, Karen Minnichi, Blake Rosen, and Casey Sharp earned a second-place trophy in the event Engineering Design, which, by the way, is the sixth time in the last seven years that we trophied in that event. Answering the prompt of clean water, the team decided to focus their efforts to clean water in Romania, a country that has been plagued by shallow wells and water pollution since the Roman Empire. Corpus and Rosen teamed up to semifinalize in computer-integrated manufacturing. Additionally, a team of Shreya Bhutani, Mika Esperanza, and Madison Lee qualified this school to be a LEAP legacy chapter, earning them seventh place in the organization's leadership program. For the first event, the students engaged various leadership community-based activities, including an outreach program from PW to CES to help with the technology classes here. In addition to the regular technology competition, Bhutani received a Gold Achievement Award, which recognizes TSA members who develop skills in leadership and strive to achieve the ideals of TSA. In preparation, she created a program within the chapter to promote STEAM education and conduct problem-solving activities at Colonial Elementary School, and reached out to the other high schools who were new to TSA and helped them start their own chapters. Other members who participated in this program were Esperanza, Lee, Minnichi, Ryan Clancy, and Emma Smith. The group of 21 CMS students also excelled in their events. A team of Victoria Brock, Jocelyn Freed, Caroline Kay, Abby Minnichi, Lisa Somaliak, and Ari Van Cat placed first in the event Biotechnology. This event focused on the process called bioremediation, which is a process where microbes consume and neutralize harmful aspects of microplastics. In this case, bioremediation was used on ocean trash to keep aquatic life safe. The team of Drew Augerwall, Evan Chan, Luke Gomer, Kevin Shi, William Stanzak, and Dean Sutchlin placed sixth in the same event. Catapult Design was a team of Sean Bousale, George Clark, and Nolan Marasco, who placed fourth. Augerwall, Minnichi, and Somaliak teamed up to earn fourth place in Construction Challenge. Brock, Clark, Freed, Minnichi, Somaliak, Van Cat earned sixth place in Geospatial Technology. Freed, Kay, Minnichi, Somaliak, and Van Cat also teamed to earn a second-place trophy in Medical Technology Issues. The team decided to research bionic skin, which can be used to aid mainly burn victims and also people with prosthetic limbs to make them more realistic. Becker, Minnichi, and Shi teamed up with Caitlin Dougherty and Ally Fergus for a fourth place in website design. Individually, Van Cat earned a fourth place in the event Essays and Technology, where she wrote a research-based essay drawing connections about technological topics. Additionally, Augerwall earned a ninth place in the event Technological Design, in which he demonstrated agility in using technological design process to solve an engineering design problem. PWHS was also proud to have one of their own, Lauren Kim, serve as the organization's 2016-2017 National Sergeant-at-Arms, leading the planning of the conference for over 10,000 conference attendees. She is currently in her freshman year at the Wharton School of Business at the University of Pennsylvania. Overall, Colonial TSA students have accomplished great success and have proudly represented the Colonial School District once again, but this would not have been possible without the helpful mentoring and support provided by Colonial School District staff and administration, the Colonial School District community, and the TSA advisors. Diana Rickert, Rich Avon, Neil Angle, and Joe Nark, their impressive accomplishments at the National TSA Conference demonstrate that Colonial students are using their inspiring STEAM skills and seizing opportunities that they receive as a result of the innovative programs provided by their teachers. Colonial TSA members are taking their daily learning to their advantage and in turn defining their future and learning to lead in the technical world. Thank you.
While everyone's going through and before Mr. Rickert leaves, I just want to take a moment to thank him as well. I've actually had the opportunity to observe the amount of incredible work that this man puts into this for several years, and it really is, I mean, to have all these kids at regionals and states and then take them all over the country to compete in these things, and he really does it out of the love for this organization, and I want to thank you. You do a great job. Okay. So we have next the financial reports. Oh, I'm sorry, approval of minutes? I'm sorry. Okay. So we, Enclosures 1, 2, 3, 4, and 33. The General Meeting of August 17th, the Facilities Meeting Committee of July 27th, and also of August 29th, 2017, HR Committee Meeting of September 11th, 2017, and the Finance Committee Meeting of September 11th, 2017. Do I have a motion? Second? Okay. Any comments? Okay, all in favor? Financial reports, enclosure 5, I'm going to take these all as one. We have the General Fund, Federal Programs Bill, Capital Reserve Fund, Food Services Bill, Cafeteria Report, Outstanding Investment Report, Cash Flow Summary, Comparison of Taxes Collected, Real Estate Tax Ex割 Report, Trust Fund Report, Reconciliation of Cash Accounts, Budgetary Deficit Status Report, and the Bond Report. Do I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. And we'll take the Treasury's report of August 2017. Do I have a motion?
Send out.
Second? Okay. Any comments from the board? All in favor? Okay. Is there any public comment on tonight's agenda? Okay. Could you please state your name and where you live for the record, please?
Sure. This is, I'm Eunice Franklin Becker. I live in Plymouth Meeting. I'm a Colonial parent.
Thank you.
A couple of things I wanted to comment on. First, thank you so much for recognizing the TSA students as a TSA parent. We're really proud and impressed with all the work they do. I think it's great that you're having this meeting. It's really unfortunate that this is cross-scheduled with back-to-school nights at several of the elementary schools. In particular, Ridge Park and Conshohocken both have new leadership, and this deprives parents of the opportunity to attend this meeting and the back-to-school night. It doesn't allow this new superintendent to be at the back-to-school nights and interact with the communities, and I know, at least at Ridge Park, there are lots of parent concerns, and this would have been a great opportunity for you to interact with us as parents in the school. And, you know, overscheduling like this is one of the things that keeps families from being more engaged with the school board, so I wanted to mention that. And then the other thing I wanted to comment on is the lunch policy, 808.1, that's on your agenda this evening. I'm concerned because there is no specific provision for providing lunch in the policy every day for children in grades 6 through 12 if their lunch accounts are in arrears. It's specifically stated for grades K to 5, but not for grades 6 to 12, and I think that's an unfortunate omission from the policy. And I'm going to have to go run to my other child's back-to-school night, so thanks for your time.
Can someone speak to the policy? Is that not in there for the kids 6 to 12?
I do remember us discussing that specifically with high schoolers, that we didn't, we're not going to include them for the high schoolers. But I don't remember for ages for 6 to 8.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
It's a good question.
It's a good question. Okay. Any other more public comment on tonight's agenda? Okay. Staff report, Dr. Christian? Oh, yes, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see anybody. Oh, can you come up to the microphone, please? And can you please give your name and where you live for the minutes?
Dana Alsheski. I live in Conshohocken, Pennsylvania, and I would just like an explanation, just that's in-depth, for anybody that is running a club, enclosure number 22, because there's been no information. Basketball's here, wrestling is coming, and we want to know how it's going to affect our clubs.
The revisions to the policy?
The enclosure 22, because basketball sign-ups are up.
Sure.
Now everybody else is in wrestling, and there are a couple different communities and very concerned as well.
Okay. I don't think there's a reason to be concerned. I'll ask Dr. Christian to speak to it, please.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly, and Mr. Yem can fill in any missing pieces. When it came to the district, the board had already endeavored to discuss the use of facilities and updating multiple policies in the district. One of the goals in mind is to acknowledge the residents of the districts who are obviously taxpayers and already paying for the space, and acknowledge their use of facilities over clubs and/or groups that may have members that are not majoritively residents of the district. The policy, while overarching, did not address those areas. We also looked at the different classifications that existed, and several of the groups that were already using our facilities either fell within them, but they weren't necessarily entirely clear as to what class they may belong to. The board in their discussion at the public FMT meeting reiterated their desire to have families and residents, whether they attend our schools or not, but residents of Colonial, be the primary users of our facilities. It is well-intended, but we needed draft language that would help ensure that as we allocate time. And there are several districts out there that charge an added fee even for residents, including up to thousands of dollars. It's been the tradition here, really, not to charge outside groups except for the cost of keeping the buildings open, having custodians, cleaning, those types of things. So we looked at PSBA sample policies. We also gathered policies from Upper Dublin, Marble Newtown, and the like, and one of the things that we liked about their policies is they had multiple criteria for awarding space. Those criteria include the relative size of the groups that are asking to use them, historical use of the building, groups that have already been with us, also an 80% recommendation for residency. The goal is not to squeeze out, for lack of a better term, groups that have the majority of their participants belonging or living in the district. But if we have a group that only has 40 or 50%, and another group that has 80 or 90%, we think priority should be given to the residents. And also, if we have a group that is lacking residents in their group, there should be a fee charge, because there's wear and tear on our facilities, our fields, our gyms, those types of things. There's multiple criteria so that there will not be one deciding factor as Mr. Yem allocates time and space, and we know equity is not always equality, so that's why we had many criteria in there. I think we spoke on the phone today, and the example we talked about with basketball, if one group has 71% of their membership are residents and another group has 68%, we're not going to do a math equation where we say you get, you know, 3% more time. We'll make it equitable. But it's for those, for some of the groups, and we also have groups that don't have children, and maybe they're an adult group that just want to use our facilities, and they come from all over. They can come from in and out of the district, so we wanted to make sure we were staying true to the residents. So I hope that provides some overarching view.
One more question. My neighbor's.
I'm sorry. Could you please, because we have to keep the minutes. Thank you.
No problem. So my neighbor who plays Colonial Soccer lost field time for Tuesday nights to either Chestnut Hill College or Sports and Social Club, so stuff like that won't happen to the Colonial clubs anymore?
So, great question. The Chestnut Hill agreement is separate from this policy. That's an agreement that the district approved recently to have, pardon me, Chestnut Hill is paying to redo Victory Field, and so they're also essentially renting that field. We have, the district has it from 2:00 to 6:00 every day for our PIA practices, and then they have it in the evening. So if there are outside clubs, we'll have to find, like youth groups that want to come use it in the evening.
Yes, like the Colonial Soccer.
We'll have to find, we have an agreement with Chestnut Hill, so they would have priority then, but we'll look for other space.
Okay.
So Chestnut Hill's a separate agreement.
Okay, okay.
Does that help?
Yes, yes, thank you.
But just for clarity, that's just for the turf field?
Correct.
The other fields, we have full control over?
Okay.
Yes, thank you. That's just that one field.
Yeah. Yes. Please give your name and where you live for the record, please?
I'm Bob Hemmerich. I'm president of the Executive Council of Plymouth Junior ABA Basketball Program. We've been in operation 63 years, grinding out some of the championship players that have played on the championship PW teams over the years. Our concern has been that 80% rule would apply to us, but if I'm hearing you correctly, you're saying that would not affect our playing facilities for the next year?
It is one of multiple criteria that will be considered to prioritize who has access to facilities, not the only.
Yeah, we have 525 young people playing basketball between the ages of 5 and 16, and it's a large group, a supportive group. We've been a business, if I can call it a business, for 63 years, so we certainly don't want to see the program put it into jeopardy with any new rules or regulations. We're playing through the demise this year of the West Gym. We've been able to negotiate a short-term contract with the Fellowship House for part of the program that we won't be able to use the nonexistent West Gym anymore, but we appreciate the support that the district has given us over the years. We hope and continue that that support will be there during the coming years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Justin?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Bruzzo. I'm a resident. I have four children, all in the district, two in high school now that aren't in the district. My kids have played in every sports league in the entire district. I was actually president of the local swim club for 10 years. I'm no longer the president. But I'm coming here as a question regarding, we had a lot of facilities use issues, problems this year, and my questions are regarding the criteria. So the local groups didn't receive any information actually on any kind of criteria, just basically a residency issue, and I think there's a lot of things coming into play here regarding all the criteria. Number one, is there going to be some type of ratio of percentage versus number of attendance versus who's going to police these issues? We had a lot of issues regarding getting gym time. Gym time is very valuable up here. It's very tough. Every group can't get enough gym time, enough time for their organization and their club, and I see that this is going, this is going for a second vote today. I was going to ask this to be tabled until all the local groups were given a little more understanding of the criteria, because there's really, the only criteria was just a residency issue, correct?
No, no. So we discussed this at a public meeting. It was on the agenda for the public meeting. We always invite everybody to attend meetings, you know, and there are minutes about, you know, we discussed it twice, actually, at two facilities meetings. The 80% is only one of several criteria, and it really.
Is there a criteria list that was published anywhere?
It's in the policy. If you look in the policy.
Mr. Yem has copies, and he can hand them out, but not to interrupt.
Yeah, I wasn't sure. The only reason is because I'm on an email list that goes out to everybody who does facility use, and nothing ever came by all the local groups. I'm not just concerned about my kids' activities, but other kids' activities, you know, like, for instance, like, I know the basketball guy didn't know about this.
Yeah, the intention is not to stop the town's.
Oh, yeah, we know that.
You know, we're.
It's based on availability of space, timeliness of an application, because we do, every district gets them at the last minute.
Yes.
Versus folks that plan ahead. The number of students within the organization that's requesting space, so you could have a really large group versus a really small group, so there could be an allocation difference there. 80% residency of the group. Also, scheduling the facilities on a priority basis, meaning Class 1, which is a district of PIA.
Yes, of course.
That gets priority over a Class 2, which might be some of our youth groups, and then they would get priority maybe of some outside group that's paying, that wants to just come in and use it, and they really have no affiliation with the district, so they would be deprioritized versus our Class 2s. And then lastly, the prior history and use of the building. So if we've had people who have been involved, we want to recognize that, and also, quite frankly, if there have been organization groups that haven't treated the facility very well, and we've had continual problems.
Of course.
We need to, we need to limit their access until they get their house in order, so to speak. But I'll have Mr. Yem, he'll have copies available, and what I can, it's the board's choice if they would like to table it or not, but if they don't, and it becomes approved tonight, what I'll instruct Mr. Yem to do is have a users' meeting, and some of our most frequent users, to go through the policy and talk about its practical application. The goal here is not to limit access. The goal is to distribute it fairly.
Yes.
And certainly, we want to continue the groups who have fed the high school programs everywhere. I used to, I used to coach basketball at Methacton, back when Methacton was in the suburban conference, and I remember losing to PW a lot, and I now sit on, I sit on a recreational board, so I understand where you're coming from.
One more question regarding the policing of this policy. Will that be directly just Mr. Yem and facilities, or do we have to worry about undue influence coming from board members or administration?
Well, Mr. Yem is part of administration. We work for the board, but they instruct us to run the district, so it'll be the Facilities Department that leads it. If they need input from my office, I'll certainly, certainly accept it.
We just had a few run-ins last year where we had some people speaking against us, and it didn't kind of help our cause with our pool issuance, and luckily, Mr. Yem was very fair with everyone, but we had, you know, there was influence coming from the board.
I can't speak to that. I can tell you that the approach should be, it would be a fair approach using the criteria set forth.
But only the facilities manager decision.
It's his recommendation.
A recommendation, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep.
Can I chime in something?
We just, we have another public comment. Oh, sorry.
Yes, one second, Mr. Stokes. Can you just clarify that we have a policy? This is revisiting the policy. There were already, there were multiple classifications. There was like six or seven.
Seven.
So just so that Mr. Bruzzo knows that it wasn't just a residency thing, there was a lot of, there was a policy that was already in place that we were working with. This is just simply updating it and making it more efficient.
That's correct. We actually took seven classifications or categories and pared it down to three. Makes it a lot cleaner for people to understand, and quite honestly, for us to use as well.
Well, and actually, that's a very good point, and I would just point out as well that we've been cleaning up our policies over the past few years, and this was the next on the list. It's not like we're just pinpointing one policy. You'll see there's two tonight, and if you look back in the minutes, pretty much every couple months, we're revising a new policy because a lot of them are out of date based on how we practice things now and new laws and regulations, et cetera. So this was just in the queue. Sorry, go ahead.
Gregory Stokes, I'm a Lafayette Hill resident. I have three children living in the district. On behalf of CCA, we just wanted to thank the board, Superintendent Mr. Yem, for their diligence and working towards this policy. After reviewing the policy, it's a policy that really just makes sense. It's a policy, our review shows that will give priority to Colonial School District residents and taxpayers, which is what these facilities are meant for, so we thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. So, staff report, Dr. Christian. I'm on the wrong page?
No, I'm on the wrong page. My apologies.
Okay, thank you.
We have one presentation this evening. Karen Burke, our Director of Pupil Services, will provide a summary of this year's Extended School Year program, which is a requirement for all school districts in the Commonwealth.
Thank you, Dr. Christian.
You're welcome.
Extended School Year, or ESY, services are individualized instructional programs that are provided beyond the length of the school, regular school year for students who have disabilities. Eligibility is determined by the student's IEP team that's based on specific criteria that's defined by the Special Education Regulations. It's considered to be necessary when the benefits that a student has gained during the regular school year would be significantly jeopardized if he or she did not participate in an educational program during the summer months. So during ESY programs, students work on very specific targeted IEP goals that are determined by the IEP team in order to maintain the skills that the student has learned during the school year, and the purpose of this is so that the student can basically hit the ground running when school resumes in the fall. This summer, there were a total of 71 students who participated in our ESY summer programming. The program ran Mondays through Thursdays from July 5th through August 3rd for four hours a day. in an educational program during the summer months. So during ESY programs, students work on very specific targeted IEP goals that are determined by the IEP team in order to maintain the skills that the student has learned during the school year. And the purpose of this is so that the student can basically hit the ground running when school resumes in the fall. This summer, there were a total of seventy-one students who participated in our ESY summer programming. The program ran Mondays through Thursdays from July 5th through August 3rd for four hours a day, for a total of eighteen instructional days or seventy-two instructional hours. The elementary Extended School Year program consisted of five classes serving fifty students in grades K through five, and the focus of instruction was centered on academic, speech and language, and social skills. The secondary ESY program consisted of two classes that served twenty-one students in grades six through twelve, and the focus of instruction for these students focused on academic, daily living, and transition to adult life skills. Data collection that took place over the summer revealed that all students, we're happy to report, maintained or showed improvement in at least some of their targeted IEP goals. Seventy-six percent of the students maintained or showed improvement in all of their targeted IEP goals. So all in all, it was a very successful Extended School Year program, and the kids not only learned a lot, but had a good time as well.
That concludes my report. Thank you. Okay, correspondence, Leslie?
Thanks, Beth. Dr. Elizabeth McKinney, our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, seeks board acceptance of a thirty-five-hundred-dollar grant from the Quaker Chemical Company to support the Girls in Technology Summer Program that was just held over the summer. And that's a motion to accept that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, Food Service Grant Scholarship Opportunity. Ms. McCoy, Director of Food Services, seeks board acceptance of a twenty-five-hundred-dollar grant for No Kids Hungry Share Our Strength. The funds will be used to employ efforts on increasing breakfast participation. Approval for a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar scholarship to cover the costs for two food service staff members to attend a two-day culinary training session is also requested. The scholarship and training were both provided by Project Pennsylvania, and that is a motion.
Second.
Questions? Okay, all in favor? Okay, so, Dr. Christian, Superintendent's Report, and we'll take that in the enclosure nineteen together.
Great. Board actions requested regarding the enclosed personnel changes, appointments for promotion, employment, or transfer are subject to the presentation of valid credentials, employment verification document, documentation, and state mandated requirements. We also have extra duty and extra pay contracts. The one final position that we need to hire was due to a fairly abrupt resignation at our high school, and that teacher is finishing her assignment, and we will be welcoming a new special ed teacher there, so we'll have continuity within the staff at the high school.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, do we have a student representative? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you. All right, Student Representative Report.
Yep, so all the classrooms look great from construction. There's AC in all the classrooms, which is really nice, especially because of the heat. There's new furniture in all of the classrooms. There's a new lounge in the main lobbies, all these new seats, and that's pretty good for people who stay after school or before school to kind of just stay there. The offices are in much better location because they're all down one main hallway, as opposed to like scattered around the school as they were in the past. And that goes for all the classes, as they have like new numbers, like the lettering of the of the classes, they're lettered A, B, C, and D in sections, so it makes it much easier for students to get around, and especially because there's less traffic due to the construction in the outer part of the school and not in the middle of the school. The parking and traffic is, morning traffic is much better as more part, more parts of the building start to open up, and once the main entrance opens up, it'll be much better there. And some new clubs, there's the Intersectional Feminism Club that just started, it's getting a lot of attraction in the school. The Autism Speaks and Pay It Forward Clubs as well. Also, last year, the Microfinance Club raised twelve-hundred dollars in microloans for five different people in developing nations, and they are starting to raise money as well this year, and they're going to get back these loans and lend again. And then, students are excited about Foundation Day as they, a lot of people are signing up to be student tour guides and for the community that's coming in. And seniors just had their first Florida trip meeting today, so everyone's excited about that.
What did seniors have?
Their fir, their first Florida trip, Florida trip meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Everyone's excited about that. They had the whole video going on.
It's a good time.
And that concludes my report.
And for the record, when is Foundation Day?
October seventh.
October seventh, just so we get that out there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, new business, Kathy, out-of-state trips.
Dr. Jason Pacani, PW High School Principal, seeks board approval for the following trips. I'm going to lump them into two. The first is varsity cheerleaders to attend the cheerleading competitions in Burlington, New Jersey on November eleventh, and Toms River, New Jersey on November twelfth. That's enclosure twenty. And also for a trip for the Yearbook, Yearbook and Newspaper Club to attend Columbia University Publication Seminar in New York City on November sixth. That's enclosure twenty-one, and that is a motion.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, Board Policy Changes. These are both under the Facilities. One is Proposed Revision, enclosure twenty-two, Proposed Revisions to Board Policy seven-zero-seven, Use of Facilities Being Provided on a Second Read Basis for Board Approval. And then enclosure twenty-three is Policy eight-zero.
I think we should take them separately.
Maybe take them separately, please?
You want to take them separately? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, enclosure twenty-two, I will, that's a motion. Is there a second? Okay, all in favor?
Questions?
I'm sorry, are there any questions?
I just want to thank Facilities, Mr. Yem, and Leadership for taking the opportunity to look at this policy, all of our policies really, and update them to make them as beneficial for the community as possible. So thank you for the time in doing this, and I look forward to voting for it.
Okay.
That's all I got.
All in favor? Okay.
I've opposed, yes, Kevin, he was opposed.
Is anyone opposed? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, all right. Motion passes. Okay, thank you, Sue Moore. Okay, I'll get her back. The addition of Board Policy eight-zero-point-eight-one presented for board approval, and that is enclosure twenty-three, and that is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any questions?
So on page, it's page two of three of the policy, we have in there for grade six to eight that, so K five, if kids don't have a lunch, we provide them a lunch. If their accounts are past due, we make sure that they have something to eat. For grades six to eight, what we have in here is that what, if the account is ten dollars past due, which is the approximate cost of three lunches and three breakfasts, then they cannot eat, they cannot, they will not be given food. For grades nine to twelve, it's twenty dollars, which is like the same thing, three, about three lunches. So my only concern is, is could that threshold be a little bit too low? Because three lunches is three days, and every Friday, like a note goes home. So it's very possible that a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, then the notice hasn't gotten to home or or something along those lines. So my thought is if we could possibly approve this with the stipulation that we increase those levels, I think the policy is wonderful. I'm just wondering if we could maybe adjust those levels a little bit.
Do we have to table that?
They can amend the threshold tonight and then still prove it.
Yeah, let's table the policy the next month and have another discussion. Can we put it on the October Facilities Meeting again, and we'll talk about it again?
Absolutely. And I know our, our opening guest had a question about it.
Yeah. I never saw it as the point of three lunches.
Just so the board knows, and we can address it in the written word, we would never let a child K to twelve not have a lunch. They just cannot.
But it's not, but it's not explicit in the policy.
But we just discussed it at the committee meeting, and we said, kid needs a lunch, we're going to give them a lunch.
We just won't let them go, you know, charge the a la carte snacks and do all that extra stuff.
That's different.
They can get the basic lunch.
Right, right. So let's table it, we'll talk about it, let's just put it on the agenda for the October meeting, Mr. Yem, and we'll table it for tonight, okay?
I'm not sure, not everyone's here, so let's just have a con, yeah, I don't, it's fine.
Do we need a motion to table it?
Do I have to motion to table it?
I'd like to make a motion to table it, so the next.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any more comments? All in favor? Okay, passes. Okay, bid approvals. Enclosure twenty-four, Terry M., Director of Operations, submits a consortium fuel bid coordinated by the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit for Board Review and Consideration. Is it okay if I take these together? Okay, thank you. And Lori McCoy, Director of Food Services, submits bid recommendations for cleaning and paper supplies for the two thousand seventeen-eighteen school year, and that is a motion. Is there a second? Any comments or questions? All in favor? Leslie, A.
Karen Burke, our Director of Pupil Services and Special Education, seeks board approval for four agreements in lieu of FAP. That's for four students. Due to restrictions regarding student confidentiality and privacy, these agreements were reviewed in executive session earlier this evening, and that's a motion.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Contracted Bus Driver Approval. Enclosure twenty-seven, Kathy Ellis, Director of Transportation, requests approval. I missed what? Sorry, we'll go back to that. F, Kathy Ellis, Director of Transportation, requests approval of school bus drivers employed by First Student and Seg Bus Company for the two thousand seventeen-eighteen school year. That is enclosure twenty-seven, and that is a motion. Okay, any comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, all right, we'll go back. Leslie, A.
Again, Karen Burke, our Director of Pupil Services, requests board approval for the renewal, renewal contract with the Timothy School. Tuition rate for each student for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year will be seventy-one thousand dollars. I was going to ask a question of Karen Burke. Could you tell us how many students are going to the Timothy School? We have three students. Thank you.
And what kind of services does it provide?
The Timothy School is an approved private school in the state of Pennsylvania that services the needs of students primarily on the autism spectrum.
Thank you.
Okay, did we have a second? Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Kathy, I have a second.
Oh, oh, did he not? Yeah, well, I knew she did that, okay, okay. All right, J, Leslie?
Yes.
Oops, Dr. Jason Pacani, PWHS Principal, seeks board approval for Sarah Frye, PWHS Library Media Specialist, to attend the PA Library Association Conference in Pittsburgh on October sixteenth. And that's enclosure thirty-four, and that's a motion to approve that.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, so moved. Committee reports, Leslie, oh, so Leslie's report, geez, I'm moving two minutes. No report. Okay, I'm used to that.
I know.
But I thought maybe tonight there'd be a report, because everything's out of, moving along. Okay, Leslie, intermediate, no.
Thanks.
Yes, Intermediate Unit Board, Leslie.
All right. The Board of the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit met on August twenty-third in their Norristown Building. The virtual high school online classroom continues to add more of the county districts this month, including Springfield, Perkioman, and Norristown. Colonial already participates in VHS. The MCIU Board also ratified many agreements for professional development, particularly with new offering for teachers in the STEAM realm of studies for which we're very excited about, internet resources for teachers and students, special education programs, and purchasing consortiums for districts to acquire supplies to start the school year at lower price as we did with the fuel bid this evening, and professional services to interim business management and school psychologists. MCIU provides many services for many, all the school districts in the county, and we do partake of that. The MCIU also continues to be committed to early learning for our county's students because teachers and parents know that preschool really does help and lead to success for students when they get into school. The Early Learning Academy at the old MCIU building on West Main Street now has eleven classrooms with nearly three hundred children between the ages of three and five for pre-K counts. That's very exciting. And there are also twenty-five Head Start classrooms at eight sites around the county with over four hundred children enrolled in those. Both of these programs offer free or very low-cost education for preschoolers, so please contact the MCIU if you're interested in all and your children attending. The MCIU is also looking forward to expanding these programs further with future grant applications. And that concludes our report. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Mel?
Yes, I have a few items, and they're all good news from the tech school. First is that overall enrollment is up over a hundred students from last year. It's the highest it's been in fifteen to twenty years, and that's very encouraging. Second, the tech school is comprised of three school districts, Colonial, Norristown, Le Permarion. Other local districts who are not members are able to send students if they pay tuition. This year, we have thirty-eight tuition students from outside districts, and that's a real windfall for the tech school. Thirdly, this morning, we had a meeting of our Distinguished Alumni Association, and we considered people for induction into the association, and we approved three people. One is a nurse, one is a physician's assistant, the other is a doctor, and all three are Plymouth Whitmarsh graduates, so we're very proud of that.
Great, thank you. Mel, Continuing Human Resources?
No report.
No report. Finance, Trevor, is there anything to, I just realized, because Felix isn't here?
I think the one thing worth mentioning is that the Act One Index is set at two-point-four percent for, to kind of kick off the start of the budget process for next year.
That's worth mentioning.
Other than that, that's all.
Okay, that doesn't mean that's what we're doing, but it's worth mentioning. Okay, Leslie, Curriculum?
Thank you. Lots of news for parents. Yesterday, our Curriculum Committee met with, headed up by Dr. Liz McKinney and curriculum supervisors, and gave a very comprehensive presentation on new initiatives and new programs and expanding existing programs in K through twelve. I would like to touch on a few of them. We review the current status of diversified instruction and how it expands, it's now expanding into K to five grades, and the new gain approach in the same grades, which provides focused prescriptive remediation to grow achievement for all our students. We are piloting a being a writer in K through three, which interweaves academic and social emotional learning with the skill of writing for those youngsters. We'll also be utilizing a new authentic project-based lesson resource called Defined STEM in grades three and four this year as part of the social studies units. In addition, K through five, library media specialists will use a program that combines computer science principles with computational thinking process. Fourth and fifth grades will be using a new way to look at the scientific method with an instructional model that incorporates the five Es: engage, explore, explain, elaborate, and evaluate. New way of looking at it, it's great for the kids. Colonial now has a very exciting partnership with Drexel University, which will provide content and instructional support for our high school engineering and computer science electives with both graduate and undergraduate students from Drexel University. That's a really exciting thing, and the kids have already seen some of it in their classrooms, and they like it so far. And finally, at the middle school, a pioneering installation will take place this year in the first floor in the light court. It's in collaboration with Riverbend Environmental Resource Center, and CMS will begin studying aquaponics. And that is a combination, I have learned yesterday, of aquaculture and hydroponics, the science of growing fish and plants together in one integrated soilless system. And aquaponics ecosystem will be built in the school for students to study, and it seems to be a great potential for food sources for the globe going forward. And that concludes our report.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Facilities. Nothing going on in Facilities. Actually, and the kids talked about the school, I think it's very exciting, and I hope as many people that can come on Foundation Day. I spent the day in the high school last week for Photo Day, and really, I mean, it's really amazing the way it's coming along. And Mr. Yem, can you just talk about when will the front be done and all, when can everyone expect that piece to?
The front will be open the first week of October.
It will be done the first week of October.
Actually, for Foundation Day, it'll be ready for presentation. And there may be some minor things to have, take care of after that, but it'll, for all intents and purposes, be pretty close to being completed at that point. But the lobby will be probably another couple of weeks past that because it's a specialized type of wood that had to be ordered, and that'll probably be another three to four weeks past that.
Okay, okay. So we're, we're done with that. We have two new, ten new classrooms. We have two new, 10 new classrooms and two buildings, and an incredible summer.
Yeah, four classrooms at Ridge, I'm sorry, four classrooms at Plymouth Elementary, four at Ridge, actually, there's probably six at Ridge. There are two smaller-sized classrooms and four regular-sized.
Right.
But, yeah, it was quite a summer.
Okay. And if anybody's driving by, they can see that there's no more gym, but there's going to be a beautiful one next year.
Yep. West Gym is no longer, no longer there.
So, okay. Community relations, Kathy?
Yes. We've mentioned Foundation Day a bunch of times, which is awesome, because it's going to be amazing. And I'm so glad to hear that the high school students are excited about it as well. It's going to be an amazing day. It's from 12 to 6, so I hope everybody can attend. Just to general, now that we're all back to school, lots of stuff going on, as we heard earlier, you know, there's back-to-school nights happening, and open houses, and, and those types of things. I just want to let everybody know that our website is very useful. If you haven't been to it, there's a full calendar with all of the events, all of the meetings, all of the public meetings, as well as everything specific to the schools. And you can actually subscribe to them to go right to your smartphone. So if you're somebody who likes to use your smartphone or a Google Calendar, it's really easy to get everything where you need it to be, so that you're not missing out on things that sometimes we miss. There's also a Facebook page that I want to encourage you to follow. It's the Colonial School District Education Foundation page.